Hello, this is Siswe Podcast. My name is Patricia and I'm with my co-host Agnes.
Hello, thank you so much. And today we are so honoured to have someone special in our studio. She's in the person of councillor Jennifer Rice. She's in Ward Epi Kanipioche. If I'm not pronouncing it well, Jennifer will take it from me and do it properly. Honourable, you are welcome.
Oh, thank you so much and for having me here. I was very, very excited and to looking for this opportunity to chat with those wonderful ladies here. And I'm Jennifer Rice, City Councillor and for Ward Epi Kokan Epi Oche, which is cover at South Edmonton and part of southwest Edmonton as well.
Thank you. This is Siswe Podcast and we invited Jennifer here today because most of us as immigrants, we don't really know what goes on in the city or who is in charge of what. Or when you hear the word city councillor, how much do you know? What do they do? So today, I will start by asking Jennifer, who is a city councillor and what do they do?
Thank you for that questions. As you say, as you said, and many, many immigrants come to our city. This is actually a very beautiful city. I am first generation immigrants, originally from China. So English is my second language as well. And then I actually personally experienced from bottom start over, learning English and learning skills and how to be adaptable and to this new country.
Yes. So you can, and I can, and every immigrant can. We are proud of you, Jennifer.
Thank you very much. That is actually is one of the reason why I run for city councillor. Because like you just said, if I can, that means you can. That means every immigrant and come to this country and looking for the better life and looking for the different life experience, they can do the same thing.
Awesome, awesome.
And Jennifer, if I may ask, how long have you been in Canada?
Um, probably immigrant over fifteen years.
Over fifteen years?
Yes.
Wow, 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 wow.
And we've been here for twenty years.
Yes, within that span, Jennifer has become a city councillor. Wow, I said wow.
And she's the first immigrant.
Yes, first generation.
First generation immigrant.
Yes, that's correct.
The first generation immigrant, I think with some, some of us say it, but how many of us also understand that? That I came here as already an adult and I am the first person in my family that has come here. So my children will become a second generation immigrant. Jennifer is a first generation immigrant and she is a city councillor. I'll take the question back to her. What does city councillors do?
City councillor is the city governor. And we have twelve city councillors across the entire city and plus our mayor. And that means there are thirteen members in city council. For city council, we follow the government, we follow the municipality government act and to governor to govern the city and specifically and to make the policy decisions. And those including budgets decision, including how we operate our cities policies. And based on the direction city council provided and city administration implement.
Wow.
That is how our city.
Managed.
Managed. Yes, we have two different functionality and governance body. That is city council and the city administration.
Wow. Guys, if you just join us, this is Siswe Podcast. Today we are so honoured to be speaking to Jennifer Rice. She is a first generation immigrant and she is a city councillor at Ward Blackfoot. The big name, I want to stay away from it, Patricia.
While integrating Jennifer, what were the challenges that you really had that you thought this is not easy?
This is really a challenge. It is.
It is.
Specifically, and give, I'm first generation immigrant to become city councillor.
Wow.
As you may know, in Edmonton history, I'm one of the first minority female councillor in Edmonton history.
Awesome.
And specifically, like you mentioned earlier, we immigrant to this country, we already adult. We already have established the culture, language, and we bring our kids come here.
Yes.
And then that personal experience as immigrant to become councillor this journey, I'm so glad today I got this opportunity, I could share this journey. And because I really want so many, so many Edmontonians, I want you know, if I can do this, no matter how challenging it is, you can do it.
Jennifer is, is before she came here, I read she was a professor of one of the subject that I am so scared. Actually, it gives me mumps, like my cheek will swell every time I'm doing mathematics. Jennifer was a professor of a university before she came to Canada fifteen years ago and has risen to become a city councillor. I, I, I am, my, I'm on, in my chair, I feel so proud. The first, first generation immigrant to rise to that position. What can't you do? I am so proud of you. And Patricia, you have another question before I bring my question about what Jennifer stand for in her position?
Okay, being a lady Jennifer, an immigrant and being a lady, what are the challenges that you see with the governance in Canada or with the city?
So, there are many challenges. But I would like to say, um, the first challenge as a female councillor, first generation immigrant face is a culture and language. We all come from with different backgrounds, we all come with different culture. But how this culture to be refract and in the decision-making process? Because every day as a councillor, I have to make so many, so many decisions. I understand the decision, every, every single decision I made will impact our city, will impact our Edmontonians.
Yes.
How to balance my understanding with all the issues city facing, all the challenges our city facing, to balance that, what our people, our community needs? And with the different limited resources, we have to balance. And also balance the impact and how this decision could impact the city and the people. I think that is the biggest challenge. As a councillor and we make decisions every day, we have to, we have to facing.
Thank you so much. Guys, if you, if you just join us, we are speaking to Jennifer Rice. She's the Ward Blackfoot councillor in Edmonton here. And there's something that I always say, that when I came here, I, there are so many things that I didn't understand. It took me years to be able to understand Canadian culture, let alone to rise to become a city councillor. I saw in one of your goals that what is, what you are passionate about is to help all Edmontonians who pay taxes to have the worth of their money. That's every money that comes from every person here in their tax dollar, you have to make sure that money is doing what it's doing. And today is the first time I am actually learning what city councillors do. So how do you manage or administer to be able to achieve that goal that all Edmontonians are getting their monies with?
So, I think there are few points here. I, I want to start to say, I, I'm glad that you heard, I'm glad that you heard this, say the words, uh, Blackfoot.
Yes.
So I, I just want to tell a little bit, a little bit the meaning of my word names.
Yes, yeah, I love that.
And because my, my word name, Epi Kokan Epi Oche.
Ah, look at the words she's saying it. Oh, I want to learn how to say it.
Then, many, many my constituents ask me, what does that name mean? So I told them the meaning for that, that is indigenous name.
Yes.
Is come from Cree language. What does that specific means? There, there are indigenous people, they're doing celebration for the hunting, hunting buffalo on the land of Black, Blackfoot. And then every years, and for celebration that hunting brings on this land. And I think this name, indigenous name, really refract our indigenous culture and also refract the land. We are on traditional indigenous land. This is for everyone we are here. That is the meaning of the word name. And as you probably know, in the past, our cities' word name is all the number.
Yes, yeah, I knew, I knew what seven, what three, what so. Now, we have the indigenous names attached to the word, which is very honour, like we are honouring this land and the people who first came here.
Yes, so that's the first thing I want to say that. And go to your next question.
My next question is.
Go to your next question about.
My next question is your goal, like what you are passionate about that Edmontonians should have their monies with when they pay their taxes and what, that's what you are helping the city. That's part of your passion every day.
That's my, my passion every day. Yes, that's right. Serve people and serve community is my passion every day.
Yes.
And then I even like, I work like every day twelve to sixteen hours.
Wow.
Average twelve to sixteen hours, no evening, no weekend, no vacation. But I, I never fear time.
Because you love what you are doing.
I'm not, I, yes, I love what I'm doing. Uh, that is why and I'm in this position. So I want to answer your question regarding the taxpayer dollars. How we make sure we spend that taxpayer dollars really provide the value and to the taxpayers?
Awesome.
And as you know, our city provide public service and programs to Edmontonians. But where's the money from? And for us to provide that, we call that revenue. And for cities' revenue, our revenue majority come from our taxpayer dollars money.
Yes.
And another portion of user fee. And so far, in two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-six budgets, and we, our revenue, over fifty-eight percent of revenue come from our taxpayers' money. So we collect the tax money and use this money to provide services and for the people who need it.
Awesome, awesome.
So my goal and my focus, and since I decided to run as a city councillor, I want to make sure our money, you paid and received the value equal to the, to what you paid. That means we provide the services match what you paid for the tax dollars. And then by how we, how we achieve that goal?
Yes.
And then my focus is to focus on our cities' core services. That includes, you probably ask what are our cities?
I'll just go ahead that.
Yes.
That is, yeah.
Our cities' core services, we have very clear definition in MGA. That means Municipal Government Act. That is already defined what is our cities' core services. And then as a general speaking, the core services including snow removal.
Okay, the snow remover.
Yes, no, that's related to.
Then I think this year, the city is, is, is having a holiday.
Just going to save a lot of money.
Yes, snow removal and then also the basic infrastructure, capital, capital spending and to make sure we have the good condition load, load waste and also the waste collection. Waste collection is another pieces and also public transit services. So there are many, many services that are considered as a core services. And specifically our city, if you look at our city's structure and city website, you can see seventy-three to seventy-seven business line. That we call the line of the business, that is refract what is our cities' core services we are provide.
Patricia.
ETS is part of the services that you provide. And I'm so glad that you have disabled added transit, which is that's.
The that's.
And most of us in our countries, we never had that.
Yes.
So can you tell us more about the disabled added transit?
Uh, our services, our city services is for everyone, even in city. We want to make sure we have that equitable services for everyone, no matter. So this type of services really ensures the access and for the people with limited ability and have the easy access and to the city services we provide it. So because our cities, one of the fundamental value is diversity and inclusion. That means we are build the city for everyone.
Everyone, yeah. Guys, if you just join us, this is Siswe Podcast. My name is Agnes. I am here with my co-host Patricia. And today we are so honoured to be speaking to councillor Jennifer Rice. We, we, we have so much, much questions for her, but I wanted us so much to concentrate on what's bring her joy, what drives her. And I saw on her profile that she wants Edmontonians to have their monies with by helping the city concentrate and do the core services that all of us need. We will bring the curtains down, but I will go back to Jennifer. Every time we bring important people like her, we want to give her the podium to say something or what is on her heart before Patricia will come in and we will go. Thank you. Jennifer, what do you want to tell Edmontonians? We are doing this podcast in Edmonton and a lot of people in your ward are watching you. What do you want to tell us?
Oh, I think, I think I have so many sense I want to say. I have so many things I wanted to say and to people who live in my ward.
Yes.
For to people like who, like whom I represent and also to Edmontonians and across the entire city. I want to say as an individual, as an individual, I really care about every human being. We need love and care and for us to have better life, for us live in a quality life. And also I want to say as a, as a councillor, as a councillor, the reason why I run this and why I be from the first generation immigrants.
Yeah.
And to become the councillor, why I want to be in this position, to do this job, to help our city. So I remember the first time and back to two thousand twenty-one, when I was decided to run. I was interviewed by media, I say, why you want to run this? I told them very clear. In our city, we have so many, so many minority communities.
Yes.
We have so many people come from different language and different culture background. But I feel for those communities, for those people coming to Edmonton call here as a home, we are actually underrepresented around the decision-making table.
Yes.
How to make sure our voice to be heard? And because we are part of this city, we call this city as a home. We want this city to become the great place, better place and for everyone. And how to make sure those communities' voice to be heard around the decision-making table? I want to be one of that. That is one reason. Another reason, as a first generation immigrants, as many of you probably will agree with me, how challenging, how difficult we come into the new country.
Yes.
We are already has our own career, our own life as adults in our home country.
Yes, yes.
We come here, we have to change. We have to change our language.
Yes.
We have to even change how we thinking, how we talk, how we communicate with others, how we interact with others. And sometimes we face so many, so many challenges because of how we talk, how we communicate, how we interact with, be interpreted as a different way.
Yes.
And due to the culture.
Yes, yes.
Um, I know as a first generation immigrant, we may not never get to the point like the local native speaker, how we speak, how we talk.
How we talk.
And how we interact as a people. But I do not want to say our second generation, our next generation, they are struggling as we are struggling as the first generation. I do not want to say that happen. But how to achieve that goal?
Just to have you.
How to achieve that goal? And then I told the media, I said, I want run this city council because I want to use my campaign activities, really set up example to inspire our community future leaders. And for them, not have the same experience as our first generation immigrants experience there. That is why and in my focus, I advocating and support youth leadership. I really want to provide the opportunity for them to get engaged, involved in this society.
Yes.
And then after I become councillor, my passion for this refract, I provide a casual and a summer employment opportunity for students. I am actually the first councillor who hired summer students and back to two thousand twenty-two.
Awesome, awesome.
And then in my students, I hired indigenous students. I hired students and from minority community background as well.
Awesome.
Jennifer, representation matters a lot. So what would you encourage minorities to do, especially women in this country?
Awesome.
What would you say to them?
Woman leadership is a lot of topic.
Yes.
I'm really, really passionate about.
Very good.
And then you probably saw from my social media.
Yes.
And then the leadership conference, leadership, leadership, woman leadership conference, I was there as a speaker. For women, we received some bias. We received some bias.
Yes, yeah, we go through a lot.
And when we grow up and also, and when we participate and in the public service. But our women, we have that potential, we have that skills, we can equally contribute to our society. But the challenges and how we can do that, to overcome all the bias, overcome all the barriers. And specifically as a minority woman, overcome even our language barriers.
Yes.
Our culture barriers.
Yes.
To achieve that goal and then really contribute to the city. To me, um, it's not only during my career as a councillor and during my entire professional career, I always try to set example as a woman and for all my fellow women.
Women, yeah.
Say, we have the ability to do the same thing to the society. And we should never give up our dream, our goal for our life. Never, never give up, give up, no matter how challenge, how difficult. And also I believe as a woman, when we stand together, we are stronger. Like today, look at, oh, look at us, look at us. When we stand up together and when we have the same goal, when we support each other, specifically we support each other's dream and be one hind to another when they need the help. So I just want to share a little bit experience back to the COVID, not COVID.
Yes.
And it starts like back to two thousand, two thousand twenty. And because really, uh, the COVID is starting like the late two thousand nineteen.
Yes.
And then in Canada here and in two thousand.
By March two thousand and twenty, it became a thing in Canada.
Yes.
Yes.
So during our time, and I actually, I knew and I sent many, many people and facing the challenge. So I did the volunteer initiative. I initiated a volunteer activity to help women.
Awesome.
And specifically the woman with, with the children. And when the COVID breakdown, lockdown happened, women's work in the home and has to deal with all the kids for the schools, classes. And many women feel extremely, extremely challenging. So I started the coaching program. And this coaching program, because I took the course, I received the executive coaching certificate.
No, she wears many hat, my goodness.
So I use that skills I learned from that certificate program and help many women and voluntarily to help them. And during that COVID nineteen period, um, I believe as long as we believe ourselves. We believe ourselves.
Yes.
Never give up, focus our goal, focus our dream.
Thank you.
We will get there.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I, I, I feel like clapping. Guys, if you just join us, we are bringing the curtain to a close. But today I feel so fulfilled speaking to Jennifer. And I want Patricia to say the last word and then we'll end today's show.
Jennifer, we are honoured to have you.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for representing minority women.
Yes.
We are proud of you.
Thank you, thank you so much. But I do want to say, for me to get to here, I experienced lots, lots of challenges.
Yes.
Never, never give up.
Never.
Never give up. I want you know, when I first come to Edmonton, I want, I want to rent apartment. I brought my daughter walk on the street behind White Avenue. You know why? And because there are many, many apartments, put the vacant sign there. So I thought I could find some apartment there. I walked there and saw the vacant sign that I called them. Do you know what happened? When people heard my.
Your, your, your accent.
And heard my accent, they hang up their phone. And then I spent one month, I couldn't find any apartment to do it. And every day, my daughter, after my daughter's school, I took her walk on that street, one day I remember. And my daughter was very tired during that walking for us to look, looking for apartment. She lost her bus pass. And we had to go back sidewalk to all the roads, try to find that bus pass. Because back to that time, if she lost the bus pass and she cannot take a bus and said, I said, okay, maybe we can just find it. And we looked around, we tried to find, we couldn't find it. And then of course, both of us feel disappointed. At the same time, the most disappointed is nobody even wants rent apartment to us because my accent.
Yes.
And
Wow.
They finally, I found the place, where I find it, do you know where I find a place?
No.
So one international student who rents apartments near to U of A.
Uh huh.
Has a living room. Empty. So I took my daughter living in that living room for one month until the next bedroom available.
Available.
And for us.
Wow.
I, I did, I usually, I did not share this type of experience with many people.
Yes.
But I want to share the reason for me want to share this is people see me right now in the councillor position. But they never thought, I am with everyone as you the same. I experienced that type of challenge, difficult as every gen- first generation immigrant. It's the same. I learn English, I went to ESL class.
Wow.
I received lots of help as well. I would like to say because lots of help from strangers and also from the nonprofit organization and who helps the newcomers.
Yes.
Probably like
Yeah, yeah, like, yes.
Many of, in this building.
Yes.
I want to give back.
Wow.
I want to give back, I want people know, we come here, yes, very difficult, very challenged, but at the same time let believe this world have kindness, this world has love, this world has caring. I received those and right now I want to give back.
Wow.
That is another reason for me to run. After I become a councillor, I really want to make sure I can represent first generation immigrants, I can represent minority communities because their voice deserve to be heard.
Awesome, thank you. You know, like every time we do a show and we say, we give the, our guests a chance to talk, that is when you get the nuggets. And I am really honored that you, you told us the last part of the story. Giving us as immigrants, as first generation immigrants who are struggling, that I am done, it is not done, this is a land of opportunity. Jennifer, within this short period where she couldn't even speak in English, not, not that she was, she was nothing, she was a university professor, a mathematics teacher. And she come here and she cannot even find an apartment to rent. And now she's a city councillor. If she can, we can. Thank you so much, Jennifer. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much and for providing this opportunity for share my personal story.
Wow.
And because every time I share my personal story I got, I got, I become stronger.
Awesome.
Because I know for me, there's a long road, there's still the long way for me to go.
Wow.
And then this long way, not only for myself, this long
For us.
Is for all of us to go, to achieve that our city's diversity and inclusion by value really be refract every aspect in our city, in our society.
Wow, thank you.
Jennifer, thank you very much.
Wow.
Thank you. And then I'm so glad to meet wonderful ladies here.
This is so beautiful.
So I, I hope one day I can hear your story and your story.
Yes, yes.
I believe we have lots of, lots in common.
Oh, yes, like when you told, you said that story about looking for a place to rent, I'm like, wow. Thank you so much.
Thank you.